You guys are good live now, so.
Thanks, Ben.
Yeah, I made her late. I forgot my tablet, so she was printing.
We need a pledge of allegiance.
I can read things a little bit in that way. I could do if somebody approves the agenda, we can have that.
Well, yeah, we get to the pledge of allegiance.
There she is. Okay, good morning, let's stand and join me with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning. Mrs. Pyer? First thing we will have on the agenda is we have some additions to the agenda. Who we first have first on the agenda, we're considering on the RLF, right? And then we need to add also change order on the jail project, which we can do later on. I'd like to have those two added on there. Is there any additions or any other changes? If not, I'd like to have a motion to approve the agenda.
But those two we want to approve the agenda.
Second. She has been moved in second. Any further discussion? If not, all of your favors signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Contrary, motion carried. Next, you have the approval of minutes from last week. Any discussion on that? I thought they read well. I'll make a motion to the minutes as presented.
Second.
They're moved in second. Any further discussion? If not, all of your favors signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Okay, Rick, you've got time here. I'll show you that next week.
Okay. And I know I'm not on the agenda, so I'm not looking for a decision. I can maybe come back next week to see if you've thought about this or have any questions. The first thing I'm handing out is a list of our revolving loan funds, our business loan fund that we've had since 1995, all the companies that have been assisted in care since that time. So some of these, as you see on this front page, may be companies that are no longer in business. They may have another name. They may have expanded. The numbers that you see are at application, so those are the, that's the investment in jobs that would have been promised at application for that. And some businesses blow by those numbers. The second page is an analysis by county, so that you can see the total picture for the region, the loans that we've made in each county, the total amount of loans, the business equity contribution, et cetera. The third page is a breakdown of the seven different revolving loan fund tools we have and where the investment came from. So for example, EDA two, our very first one, you can see Carol put in about thirty-three thousand. There is a timing issue for why it was a little higher than the other three counties. You see the fund total at the end of that column, surrounded in black, gives you the total fund capital base of five point nine million dollars. Today, the current value of everything came in is just over six million. So in twenty-six years, we have not lost any of the funds. We have had loans go bad. We've either been able to make that up through collections or we've been able to do it through administration. Here, you can see your total investment in the fund is a hundred and three thousand, seven hundred ninety-seven dollars. You and the other five counties have invested, you're shy of six hundred thousand dollars. You see they're in the green with federal and state funds at a five point three for a total fund of about five point nine million, although it's just over six. The IRP funds you see are a loan. We have to pay those back once a year. That's a one percent loan, so we re-lend those funds back out. The first one was in two thousand, and so I think it was, it was done in two thousand and three perhaps, and so we have maybe have ten years left paying on that loan. The idea was that we would make the money off the fund to pay back the capital base, and at the end of our thirty-year loan period, we'd still have the capital base preserved. We're probably, we've been able to do that up until this point. We're probably not going to be able to do that moving forward because interest rates where they are, you can't make enough to fund your loan loss with the type of loans, plus pay admin to staff, plus be able to pay off the loan. So we will probably be using some of the capital base to pay the loan back on the IRP. The EDA funds and the ARBAG fund are all grant monies that come. That very first fund has been defederalized. It can be defederalized now after seven years. The EDA three and four, which are now combined into one fund, should be defederalized within two years. The good thing about that is that we don't have to track anymore because we were tracking everything for twenty-five years for these funds. Administratively, it's good. It's also good because it loses its federal identity. That last one, EDAC for the CARES Act, that was the one point eight four million that was provided to us in grant funds. Under the CARES Act, we committed that out to lenders in about six months. And Rich sits on our executive boards, and he sees those loans come through. What I want to talk about, you may have seen in the news, EDA has three billion dollars of which we can ask for RLF. I have, I'm going out and talking to the counties about putting fifty thousand to the fund, and that will leverage, if all six counties do it, fifty grand apiece. Since you're equal owners of Region Twelve, that'll leverage one point five million. And federal funds will have another one point eight million dollar fund. When the fiscal year that would come out of, it could be twenty-three, it could be twenty-four, as you know, in the past, I've probably, well, those of you who have been around a while know that some counties will commit it for twenty-three, and then they get the end of the fiscal year, and they've got it in the budget, and they just want to commit it early. I imagine the application, Region Twelve could cover the county's portion. I imagine the application would go in, at least an application we have to commit it. Looking to have that in till forty, by the end of August. I want it to be in the very, we're gonna start reviewing in September, and I want to be in that first tranche. So if we get funded, we've got money we can get out of the ground. So that's thing number one, which I'll come back for. If you have any questions about that, let me know. The other thing I want to talk about is the housing trust fund. Each county commits five thousand dollars a month with an increased funding from the state. But we're gonna need to come up with more match, and so I would like you to consider doubling that to ten thousand, starting in FY twenty-three, so. I don't need an answer to either of those. I'm not on the agenda, so you can't give me one anyway. That's all I have. Unless you have any questions, I will let you get back to my business and for me. If you've got a time for me next Monday.
We can do it right now if you want.
Sure.
Don't have anything on there right now, so you want to come at night?
Sure, I'll come at night.
Matt, did you have any comments on this report?
Oh, and I should say, I brought my act from CADC, who, he sits on our RLF committee, our revolving loan fund committee. Each county has their economic developer, and one banker from each county, they make the recommendation to Region Twelve Executive Board, who makes the final decision on making the loans.
You said that fifty thousand. How much does that mean to get from the state? I missed that.
None of it.
No, I meant, how much is that going to generate from the state?
Twenty percent match, so it'd be federal money that we apply to three hundred thousand between the counties. We paid one point five million from EDA if we get it. So that would be a one point eight million dollar fund.
Okay. We didn't need a county yet.
Yes. Audubon, of course, as you can see, Audubon's numbers, they haven't had as many loans as other counties. So they want to think about it. Crawford committed. SAC was favorable, but it's not.
Okay. We'll put that on agenda for us first immediately. You're available this week if you have questions.
Come to State Baseball and talk to me while I'm driving that golf cart on Wednesday afternoon. We're gonna find a better job. All right. Thank you, everyone, for suggesting.
It requires more attention. Okay, next on the agenda is review and consideration for approval of professional services of SEH. I did send you a copy yesterday of the old contract that I had some issues with that I highlighted, and they have come back with a new contract. John is here. Has John, John had a chance to look at this yet?
I think I got email, the email you gave me, that contract was not the one that I got back that said it was the second. The one I put in your packet was the one I thought was the revised one. So I don't know if they sent me the old one.
There's only been two copies, right?
Yeah. So I did send it to John, but I think I might have sent him.
The wrong one.
Well, the one that I thought was the revised one.
Yeah, the only revision really is that scope of work.
Yeah, so yes and no.
So if, and as I highlighted, I, I was gone last week, and John sent some emails to me that were not real great. But, and I hadn't looked at the contract, and I got it switched over to my phone over to my iPads. I greeted, and I seen there were some issues in there where they were like going back into part of the, they're probably selling it for part of the jail, stuff like that, which I had an issue with. And the other issue I had was there was about the energy analysis and stuff like that. To me, if they do anything, I would assume that when they make a recommendation to us on any heating or cooling, that they would have the analysis be part of that right then at that time. And so I had some issues there because I didn't think they wanted to be paying additional fees. And they did send out a different copy here, so. Do you have any comments, John, on that?
I don't know. I think we just want to get it right. And, you know, some of these available additional services that we have on here would be, you know, something that's down the road, if it's decided that you'd like some of these additional services done, we could certainly do those, but our base scope of work is all included on here. And I think we intend to just really have to do a look at the building and work with you and getting, you know, a report done for you. This isn't, you know, patched in stone, per se. We can, we can try, have a little bit of leeway here and there in terms of what we do and advise on. But, yeah, I think we're just trying to get an idea, you know, in terms of what you'd like us to have included in this individual scope, and we'll be willing to work with you on that.
Yeah, I think our biggest thing is to do the balance for HABC and our spatial needs and probably one of our other priorities is getting our boardroom set up. We want to get back into some sort of regular digs, I guess.
So does everybody have the new one?
No. So, yeah, question like on your scope of work app says determine any special fenster gated needs or upgrades for judges, determinants in law enforcement. That was supposed to be removed, correct?
Yes.
So that's a copy I have still.
I know. I didn't have any on this.
I'll give you one steps looking at here.
Okay, gotcha. Okay. But there were three, three items removed, four items removed. The energy analysis thing, the savings, and then the other ones had to do with the jail.
I mean, I think you were basically removing B through F, didn't you?
Yeah.
And so now we're down to, I thought you guys all had a copy. I wasn't.
Well, you emailed it to them, but I know I printed.
I emailed the old one.
The highlighted.
With that highlighted.
I emailed that, this one right here, the highlighted.
I have.
It's too early for this. I have the updated agreement that I.
It's in the packet. It's in the packet. You have that updated.
Really?
Yep. Yeah, I hope to see it listed in the same things.
I don't know why this is so difficult.
No, it's in the back, right?
Yeah, the revised has A1 and then sub-paragraphs A through I.
Yes. I think the email was correct, but the printed.
Yeah, I have A through O. Okay.
The printed one was in fact, like, printed like Scott.
Yeah. Well, I know what Jean said.
Jean, I think I got you the right one.
Was everything highlighted?
He got the right one, too. He has the right one.
I get the right one. We're good. I mean, I, yeah, I, I think I pretty much understand what's going on, so.
I mean, going forward, we'll review when you guys come up with those analysis. And we ask for, say, if you do this, this, and that, so we share your opinion.
We'll get it ready for your final signature. You know, I don't know if you're making a motion to do it or approve it, but we'll get it ready before it's done.
Well, and I don't think we can actually do anything until we get an opinion back.
Sure. Yeah. So we're here listening to hear what you'd like us to do with it.
And on the new copy, showing on additional service, long-term analysis, that analysis, that's for just something else that's out of the scope of what we're doing now. I mean, when you provide us a recommendation for HABC, you're gonna have analysis in that already, right?
Yeah, so we'll give you analysis on different systems like we talked about in the interview. This item C two would look at those systems, whatever system you pick, for long-term energy use, for gas use, electric please, all the way down the road to the building. And it's an estimation based on whatever system you go with. So if you go with one that's more based on, like, solar use, I think we could give you a ballpark on it. But I think this, this number C two is just a real exhaustive kind of process to determine real finer quantities on long-term paybacks and whatnot. But, yeah, in terms of our base scope of work, we certainly advise on, and it'd be tough for us to advise on the different systems. We always spoke about, I think, two or three different options. So we do that basically. So, but if you're really interested in long-term payback and whatnot, we put it down a while back as an additional service. I'm not sure. We have to talk about that a little bit and see if there's something we can do there. It could be kind of a quick and easy sort of payback analysis, something that's part of our scope.
Okay.
So, John, I wasn't here for the interview. But as far as the spatial needs part of this, so are we gonna have, it is included in this service agreement, if we have different scenarios that could happen, or may happen, or whatever, and those be included in the development of different options?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So the way I see the base scope is really your building analysis, the envelope, exterior envelope, roofing, windows, things of that nature. Analysis would also include co-reviews of the building, so fire, probably eighty. Different codes. Now, bear in mind, when we look at an existing building like this, there is an existing building code that we refer to, not the International Building Code, per se. So with an existing building, you have multiple needs, and not much you can do to understand the facilities here. There's not a lot you can do on some of these rooms to really make a lot of changes and whatnot with them, stairs, things of that nature. So I should say with the codes, I don't think we want to bring them up to the most current IBC code, but we do want to pay close attention to the existing building code and certainly not make any changes to the building that would be a detriment to the building. But if there's any options to improve anything within the reason, you know, including those suggestions. So the space needs is another component of it, and the way I see that is that we'll go through each space and talk about those spaces. And we can do a quick and easy kind of go through on our first meeting and just talk about what spaces you really want to focus on and look at. You know, if there's spaces you just simply don't want to, you know, really look at in part of the assessment. We could talk about those and quantify it, but I think our second is that when we come back for those space needs, is that we'll really talk to each individual apartment head and groups in each departments and really get an idea of what they desire in each space. And oftentimes, what that means is, you know, storage, private offices, work areas, things of that nature, open office areas, front counters. We really will dive into depth on what is wanted and needed, and we'll put together a program for that. So we know how much room you have in the building, the program will say that, and it'll say, adding up all the desired spaces, this is kind of what we've been about with, and we'll reconcile those. But I think the third part of our process, too, that is laying out all the new options, and I think that's your question, when we get to those layouts and it comes back and you say, well, this isn't really maybe what we had in mind, or maybe it's not going to work so well for us. That's okay. We'll come back and we'll use some other, you know, scenarios for you. So I do have sort of a schedule put together. That's kind of the next step for me, is to get the schedule sort of handled out and how do we want to approach this. I think I mentioned in the interview that I thought it would be a three-month process, and I think that's true. I think we do four meetings, the way we had it lined up in each would take. The first three would be a meeting every three weeks or so, and then we do the final, you know, act of delivery to when everybody's happy with what we're proposing, you know, what we have in the assessment. You know, we want to, we want to keep, we want to keep everybody here, you know, really pleased with what we're doing, what we're putting forward. So we're flexible on that three-month schedule. If we need to do another revision on floor plans or whatnot, we're willing to do that. And if we want to break the schedule a little bit more, we can work on that as we move forward. But hopefully that answers your question in terms of what we can do.
Any other questions?
We bring forth the findings, recommendations. Will we be at cost analysis with each one of them?
Sure, there would be, yeah. I'd like to think through the process, we could present cost analysis to you, so you can select.
Obviously, you know that we have a certain amount of, and you often know we have a certain amount of problems and they don't match.
Right, right. That's most of the projects we, you know, we get. There's always budgets that I think we have with. But when we advise on things, we do that during the process. I don't know that we want to leave you an assessment that's open-ended, and we don't really know what we want to be going forward. I think we'd like to reach a resolution on the HABC system, you know, we would advise on this. And we could work that, three of that to select the best one that you would think would work best for you. We could also leave in the report that we looked at a couple of other options as well. Down the road, maybe you want to change your money loss, that would be in your report. But, yeah, you know, just past experience, I think what we try to do is work together to really come up with some really good decisions. Because at the end of the day, after this is all written up and you have your floor plans in your report, you'll have an understanding of what you want to be going forward. You'll have some of those decisions you do already, and you'll have to really sort of go back to the ground with what's been found. Now, if you were to do a project down the road that would change a department layout or whatnot, in that process, you could refine those more and more. So this would be a generalized, this is how we see this particular apartment. Maybe two offices, open office area, you know, storage, things of that nature in this department. Maybe it's not exactly laid out. You'll end up eventually doing it, but I'll give you a really good path moving forward in terms of what you, what we would perceive, you know, long-term for the moment.
Any other questions?
Okay. Well, I guess my only comment is, is that, you know, I, there's been change through this whole thing. And Jean had hinted at that in the past, that this could be a moving target somewhat, you know? And I'm sure you, hopefully you'd be flexible with.
Well, if that's, if that's a concern, yeah, we're more than flexible on that. And like I said, I've been through the process multiple times, and it's, it's number one where we propose a plan and everybody says, oh, that's great, which is, you know, it's, that's exactly what we wanted, you know, terrific. It's present a plan or a plan in this three-month process or series of plans. Y'all have the opportunity to review what we've put out there. I could see going through it two or three times before we fucking get working on it. Now, is that really labor-intensive and costly? It's really not, you know? We can do some layout revisions on our side, get things right, send them back to you legally via email, so you can look at them again, EDF copies of layouts of different departments and whatnot. You can review them internally, give us comments back. That way, on the next face-to-face visit, when we come out, we'll have a decent plan that we can really kind of go through and agree with. And the really important part to that, too, is the decisions are tough on your end, and they're tough on the department heads, with their employees giving feedback and whatnot. I realize that's a really tough process. And again, we've been through that. I think the most critical part is getting things right and then getting those decisions made moving forward. The decisions are harder. And they're really important, too. So if we get those done on time, that helps the overall process. But we're more than willing to help out, get things right, make those decisions, or facilitate them, making it really easier for me.
Well, we'll have to wait two years from John before we approve it.
Sure.
We'll make sure, so we'll probably put this back on the agenda. I hope that we get an opinion from you by then, and we'll go from there.
Sure. What I'd like to say is, I think I have us potentially starting maybe in August. And after this, I'll go ahead and excuse myself and have a back. But I think we're on our end, aside from the contract. I think once we know that that's all good and ready to go, and we'll work with you on the language and everything. I think the next stop would be for us to come back here and just get started, have a good look at the building. So that could be maybe the next face-to-face. And I think it's more on us, for us to just gather data. Maybe we could start reviewing the different departments, walking through them, and just kind of getting a basic kind of layout. I'll look at HABC again. I'd like to pull all that. But I could, I could say after, if you need us out here to give a review of the contract, but I could also see sometime in August, really getting started on the project. Considering, you know, everything's in place and we're good to go. But if you want to give us a start date that you would like to potentially see, we can do that. Just to get our art staff ready to go, assign a start date, and from that, we can start setting up these different visits.
I think as soon as we start date, I think as soon as we sign the contract.
Yeah, absolutely. That would be our start. And our, yeah, our date to come out and really start the assessment would be very soon thereafter. And we would work through a schedule, I think, as well, maybe over the phone through email, things of that nature. But we want to come up with a schedule that's going to work for you. And then what it also does is gives the different department heads an idea of when the meetings will be. And with a building this size, we have, what's an eight or nine, or however many different departments, when we do come out and sit down, that's a full day, even if you give everybody an hour. An hour doesn't do justice to each department. So sometimes that's a two-day, you know, process to get through all those reviews and things of that nature. So the scheduling, you know, is really important.
When you do those departments, you want some of us to be involved in that or not?
Anybody would like to, yeah, for sure. What helps is some guidance. This isn't done all the time. You know, obviously, this is something new for a lot of people to go through. So sometimes we'll get into just a meeting, and it'll, it'll, some people will kind of take to the process and go right with it. Some will just kind of don't really know what we want, and don't really, you know. So a little guidance through what we're expecting is always given, you know. So a little guidance through what we're expecting is always given, you know? And obviously we'll help guide the process, but sometimes containing some, some wants is kind of a good thing as well. Just so you know, start to really boil it out or watch for some different conversations and whatnot. But your group will be invaluable too, just to see how you want the building, how you want it to function, what groups you want in here. And this isn't right away, this is, like I said before, this is looking down the road, however long, you know? Maybe it's a 10 year process to get this completely done, maybe it's longer, you know, we can, but budget usually dictates how much you can do in different times. But the group here can determine what groups you want to fill. You know, if you want to bring in and prove from outside if there's an empty spot or shuffle things around or things of that nature. That'll be, I think, up to you all to sort of give feedback on that. And then we would work with each department in the building and then, you know, there's building functions too, such as just general storage, election equipment storage, things of that nature that your group will have to make decisions on, you know, work out, you know, where you would like those to go. So there's, there's quite a little that you guys will be working on, but if it's a department meeting, feel free to join in if you, you know, at least the first one. But after that, you know, they sort of end the, feel a lot more easily.
Okay, good enough.
All right, perfect. Thanks for all your time.
We'll, we'll put this back on the agenda next session.
Sure. And I could be here if you'd like me to, if not, we can join in on Zoom. I think Luke, this is in.
Yeah, I don't know if there's even, if he's okay with everything else and if there is, isn't some. We'll get a hold of it so we get it back in the middle by the way.
Yeah, for sure. So, yeah, appreciate your time and I think.
Because I want, I want to keep this process going.
Yeah, me too. I think our next stop will be to come out and do a, start the assessment process.
Okay, good enough. Thank you. All right. Zach? For some reason, I am not getting.
Courtney's name changed, if that's turning up.
I, I looked at all of which I'm, I'm. All right. Zach, good morning. Two utility permits, both of them are very simple ones, just crossings. The first one is from Mid American Energy. This is West of Rita, providing power for a grain bin site. So they'll be boring under the road, pavement. Again, don't see any issues with that, pretty simple.
Name this, name this.
Apparently that's how it's in their, in the American system. Whether that's a typo or on purpose, or I don't know. But you're right, you're right.
Do I do these individually or?
However you'd like to do them today, they're both pretty simple.
Do them together then.
All right. The second one is for Western Iowa Power Cooperative. This is over on the Crawford County line north of, north of Manning, between 250th and 260th, I believe. Again, for power, again, just getting, getting power to a, to an address there. Washington Township. Don't see any issues with this one as well, pretty straightforward. There's existing overhead tower on the west side of the road that we're tying off on, so.
All right, any questions?
Okay, I'll second. Been moved in second to approve the two utility permits. Any further discussion? If not, all those favors signify with saying aye. Aye. Contrary, motion secured.
Great. Update on construction activities, quite a bit of little stuff going on. The project on Old 73 down South of Coon Rapids, they are done patching, they're working on finishing up backfilling on the shoulders and getting things kind of cleaned up today. We should be able to open that road up tomorrow, so that will be done. M33 on the Denham Willie Road, continuing to work on the base widening. They probably got another day and a half or so left of that, so by sometime Tuesday, they should get done with the base and then they'll be, they'll turn around and right start on that intermediate layer right after that. My guess is that it's starting down by Denham, we're working north, but they haven't told us exactly yet what they're doing, but really just keep, keep going from there. We also have our countywide pavement markings will be put down this week. They're coming, I believe, either Tuesday or Wednesday to start doing those, so that'll be going on. We also have some HMA patching. Some in Halber, through downtown on Second Street. There's also some there in Arcadia, south of Arcadia, I guess, by the railroad tracks, by the coal out there. There's some pretty bad spots. There's also one, one patch down in Tuppit that we're doing as well, so kind of got a full slate of things going on this week, so. And it's going to be one.
Question on the, on the Denham Willie project. Between the bridge and the railroad, they didn't grind that?
The thickness of the existing asphalt wasn't as thick there as it was in other areas. So we're, so we're just going to put the three inches on top versus milling some off. That way we make sure we have thickness there for that road to hold up.
So they have the whole west side done on the shoulder way?
Yep.
And they're working their way back?
Working their way back, they, they got to.
I want to talk to Willie if, let's leave him.
Right.
I actually was told already the roads are any better than what it was, so.
Milling it off?
Yeah.
Just mated it and let's strike it back on it.
I've heard the same things.
It's going so nice.
Yeah, make sure you cover those stripes back up quickly.
Zach, I have, I have a question. On those high, high traffic entrances to that room, are we going to do a little extended piece there because instead of a normal driveway, we'll be going out or maybe widening? And yeah, I think you know a couple that I'm talking about.
I do.
Really high traffic.
Generally, when, once we do the four foot paved shoulder, if you want to call it that, we don't go beyond that. But I know on a couple of those, one in particular, high, high volume entrance there, but on painting some of that as well.
Okay.
So I think that would solve some of that.
Okay.
But generally speaking, once we do the four foot paved shoulder, that, that takes care of not all the little fillets, is what you can call it, for all the, the entrances and as well as the turning off on the gravel road and the road as well.
One of those entrances is very tight for some eyes to begin with.
Yep.
Anything we can do to improve that, keep it off the corner of the?
Right.
Quite, it'd be advantage for us also.
Absolutely. And there's a couple, even there's a couple of intersections I know that are rough when you go across because of the traffic, turning traffic. So I think with the four foot paved shoulder, the thicker, the base underneath with that, we should be able to get away from that. Okay.
Those bills, I want to tell them that we're at crossover there. You might want to check right up at here, this is where I have that curb. I think it's one more to the American to get there.
Okay.
While they're there.
Looking at that too.
That's a good comment, that's a good comment, because they kind of ignored that on poss. With the truck traffic that comes.
There, there's.
And because.
Every year then there's heavy.
It's aha, those trucks are always aha on the shoulder. It would have been nice to have.
Had something.
Yeah, had gone out for them.
No, it's a, it's a slippery slope on, you know, the four foot generally does pretty well. You start going beyond that where you drop the line and where you, much further you go beyond. But I think some, sometimes it's working with those, those entities as well and making them aware and working with them to get something done so that there isn't issues.
To help with the issue. Very good, as long as they're working on it, I should, we should work back on it.
Absolutely.
Since you're painting stripes, have you drafted a decision on the living?
We're going to extend it a little ways further to the east, sort of the speed limit changes, but I'm going to stop at that. I know it's not what the resident up there requested, but it's, it's at least getting a little ways further out. And the reason why I'm doing that is we found other areas where we've gone that far. So I feel comfortable in that, but going further than that, I think we're going on our own paths.
Any, we're getting anywhere in the Maple River situation as far as the right of way? Nothing's changed, I'll tell you that.
No, I go through there the other day and, and, and I'm not sure what the next step is going to be. That's something I was going to talk about, okay, as well, it's in the meantime, whether we just start going out there removing things that are in the travel portion of the road or what we do, but they're, they're still there. It's been over a month, it's been about five weeks since we've built that layer, so.
It's not that same right of way of the house is taxed on you. So is it the same space you come right into town?
Yeah, it's off, off the county road towards the west cemetery.
Oh.
Up there.
North, north of, south of town.
I have a talking about the same one.
Two. Any other questions for Zach?
Thank you.
Keep you somewhere going?
It's going.
It's not raining, so.
Yeah, bleeding.
We could, we could use a little bit of that too. They're doing some, you know, trying to pick out the rough spots, but it's.
That's kind of very good, they stay.
It's, it's hard to, it's hard to do much good, put it that way.
Use that dust around.
Pretty much.
All right. Thank you, Zach.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have the sheriff's quarterly report. Do we have a copy?
Yep.
In front of them. And you can all see, we took in for the last quarter, a total of $35,290.61 after weapons permits were paid off to the state. That left us a total of $31,497.40. The main reason that's quite a bit higher is because we've been holding the view of Calvin County's prisoners, ones we can take right now. And I think we also, from here on out, there will be a separate line item just for prisoners from other county. So it will show up there a lot clearer. Okay. Any questions about any of that? Jay? There's no questions, is your motion to approve the quarterly report?
Yes.
Your second, been moved in second, any further discussion? If not, all those with favors signify with saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary, motion secured. Okay, department update? Okay, couple things I want to go over real quick. I'm working on a plaque for the new building. It'll sit inside the building, kind of a bronze plaque that's on the wall. And I just want to go over what I've got on it so far and that you all will be getting an email from me once Trophies Plus has a prototype together, make sure everybody's names spelled right, that type of thing. Couple questions though, I, I have the year the bond referendum went through, the year construction started and project completion. Even though that's not done, I'm banking on 2021. Should we just have the year project completion was on there or should we have those three things? Any thoughts? Some blacks have all three, some don't.
Well, the one upstairs that talks about, the board office kind of talks about, construction began and.
I would say that's fine, what you got there.
Okay. Board of Supervisors, I have Gene, Dean, Rich. I have listed Marty Dancer, former, Neil Bach, former. And I would like to put Scott and Stephanie on there as current board members. Any thoughts there?
Well, I think the current board members should need to be honored and I do agree that at least Neil and Marty probably should be honored.
I agree.
They were involved in the bond referendum, that's a big part of it. At least, at least Neil was part of that study there too.
Sure. So that's, that's how I have it. Scott, how do you want your name listed? Scott, okay, perfect. Architect, engineer, Shive Hadry from Duane, general contractor, baiting construction, Carol. Good enough?
Good enough.
Good enough.
Get the prototype done up at Trophies Plus, I'll email it to everybody.
So you have a start date, you said on there, construction began, you, you could put fall of 21 in that. It encompasses three months, so you don't have to put.
Fall of 20.
19.
Fall of 19.
Completion. Out of fall.
Okay.
You know, instead of trying to put, trying to put a date on.
Well, it was actually 19, wasn't it?
Construction started 19.
Yeah, fall of 19.
And project completion, I just have.
Fall of 21 completion.
Fall completion.
I just put 21. Yeah, that's. Simply because Courtney made a good product, it could not be done until, may not be done until December.
I'm trying to be a Debbie Donner, but you know.
Yeah, whatever, you know. I know, I know. I thought it was going to be tomorrow they do it, we're looking at Labor Day right now. We won't have them stamp it out until we're closer, but at least they get the prototype done.
Okay, that's nice.
So I'll send that out to everybody once I get that. Let's see, the Tahoe that we ordered, seems like 20 years ago, is finally here, all the equipment's here for it. So we are taking our K9 vehicle down to Carl Chevrolet tomorrow so they can strip it out and begin putting the new one together.
Should they find a place to park down there?
I'm guessing, I'm guessing. And then we just took bids for a new Explorer. We're going to trade in that 2011 I've been driving. What?
You looked at it.
Oh, that thing. The bids came in, one dealership, New Way Ford in Coon Rapids, as you can see, I think that's the last bid on the page, was substantially cheaper. In fact, not even close. They gave us a lot more for trade in on that 11. Other than that, everything was exactly the same. So I think, I think almost $4,000 difference in trade in. Yeah, it's in this year's budget. Oh, that's another thing I want.
How soon do you want?
What sooner the better.
We should have this on the agenda.
You guys don't have to perfectate.
It's in the budget.
I know that's been done in the past, but technically our budget is for, I think you set that up and.
Yeah, there's, there's been a attorney general's opinion in the state of Iowa that once it's been budgeted for and approved, board doesn't need to approve it.
Okay.
And I could send, and I could send that.
It's just.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's fine. Yep. I mean, to me, this is not even close. And they said six months. Turn around, I hope.
And you talk about it being in this budget, so in fiscal 21 is when you ordered the Tahoe.
Yeah, I was going to go back to that.
Go ahead.
Since the Tahoe was ordered, I think we ordered that in November of 2020. So it was in that 2021 budget and that money was still in there in the rural part and wasn't spent. So Courtney said we could do a budget amendment to put that money back into this year's budget to cover the Tahoe since it was bought in last year's budget and just didn't.
Yeah.
Between the Tahoe itself and the equipment that had to be retrofitted because of the new body style, things just took forever.
I hope there's another bill that won't take that long.
I, I don't know what to think anymore. If you look at the dealerships and they've got cars spread out every 20 feet.
Say you're taking it down, you're taking it out.
We won't, we won't.
Don't trade in, we'll do.
Don't trade in, we'll have to. Okay.
So do you have any, any other vehicle purchases in the twenty-two budget?
There's one more, I think, I'd have to look at the budget, looking off the top of my head, and you guys sit back and evaluate which vehicle we need to get rid of. The plan on this one is, it's just going to be an unmarked Explorer. Our chief deputy, Kretzinger, will get it, I'll drive his old one, and then we'll get rid of that twenty-eleven. So that's the plans for this one. And I think the next one, probably do up on trade for this year will be our pickup.
You know, can you recall any of that on this one, the two thousand eleven?
One, hundred and eighteen, something like that, somewhere in there.
That's enough.
Could it get to be about expense time?
What was that?
Getting to be about expense time.
Well, that is the two thousand eleven, so. I don't think I have.
I left a list in the paper, we can all look through it.
Yeah.
If you're, if you're done with your stuff, then let's take care of the change orders, I think Courtney handed it out. We're kind of down to the last minute. But these are change orders that were added on and that we talked about to the last couple of meetings that we've had. And they're just putting them together here in writing, so unless you have any questions on it, we need to approve this change order. And obviously they haven't put the LPT down in the lobby.
Not yet.
Requesting to have change from payment. I don't know, whatever the board feels about that, I kind of like see things before we pay or whatever. Now that we didn't pass, there's been a few things going through that we were paying for upfront. It was in storage, in storage. Do you want that paid already? Yeah, it's listed in there at that number two, but it's just a change from LPT, I don't know what was in there before.
Supposed to be polished concrete and then.
And there's that gap in that stairwell.
Yeah, yeah, there ended up being a little transition area that, between the landing and the stairs.
So is this change order on the agenda? We added it at the beginning. Oh, okay, very good.
It's my understanding, it just allows babies to do this, and then they'll build a support.
Yeah, this don't ask for anything.
Right, right.
This is just changing stuff, there's some additions and then I think there's sometimes there's some subtraction, but, oh, there isn't, there's one D, number three.
Total change orders, forty-two thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine.
There's no further discussion or more for motion to approve the change orders?
I'll make that note.
Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved in second, any further discussion? If not, all with a favor, signify with say an aye.
Aye.
Contrary, motion to adjourn.
Okay. Anything else for me?
Right.
Take off, you're driving me afterwards?
Yes.
Okay, now, do you want just, you want the rest to go along with you or not?
We're ten minutes, we're upstairs afterwards.
That was the plan, I thought.
Yeah, so if you just can join us, we've got some issues John has brought up about some things.
We're just going to go take a look at it.
Not on three?
Yeah.
Yeah, three.
In the fourth area. Yep, just get ahold of me when you guys are done.
Yeah, let's go.
What? Get out, see y'all later.
All right, next, GIS.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My quarterly report today, I've been focusing a lot on the NG nine-one-one compliance for GEOCom. Back in February, we did a changeover with the Entrado contact. Well, now GEOCom is changing the NSEG to be completely GIS derived, so I've got a lot of work in data cleanup, numbers, manipulation of data, making sure there's no gaps or overlaps in our polygons and everything's cut correctly, so it works for them. That's been a lot of mine this quarter and going forward, it needs to be done by September, October. That way we can kind of make the cutoff to keep getting that, that grant money that I think goes to the comm center, I think it's like two six thousand dollar grants that come from the GIS data, so been working really hard on that with the changing of everything. FSA has had some trouble with some of their data, so I've just been lending them a hand when they need help too as well, sharing some shape files for our farmers. I attended ITAG and I presented at ITAG with some fellow GIS people, and I just realized I put the wrong acronym. I got elected to the ICIT board for education, so that way I can help other GIS people with educational content going forward in our conferences. So it's me for me to help, you know, with being new to GIS and learning everything, as well as talking with the older folks that have been doing GIS for a while, seeing knowledge that they have and creating content for everybody within the NiPERS organization. The Census Office has searched normal splits that I helped process and put on the map. That way we have those nice GIS maps online for everybody to see. Still working on those engineers' layers office, or layers for the engineers' office, they want all of their permits mapped. So I've got three or four years for one company and I'm just going in as I have some time and putting those in, labeling those for Zach. So that'll be an ongoing project until I get all of those done. The census meetings, we've had a bunch of those, trying to find the best way for when we do our redistricting, when we get that data in August, to make it so we don't have to pay for a tool, I'm trying to find the free way, it's going to be a little bit more extensive, but there's a, there's a better workaround to save our money, making that district change. And then I was reached out by a great company here in town that they would like maps of all the townships where all the wells are, because the DNR says that they can't spray within so, so far of a well location. So I, I did help them with sixteen maps for each of the townships and I thought that was really neat.
Do you know how many are there?
I don't know how many, I can go look, but I.
Just curious.
There's a lot, every year, there's a lot. And then I did reach out to environmental health to make sure that they're getting me those wells, so I have the most up-to-date data for everybody.
Probably the Austin ones that are closed too, right?
Yes, yep, yes, so I created a legend for the ones that are open, ones that are closed, and they have to go hit a buffer so far for DNR orders, so.
That should, that should have been out a long time ago.
Yeah. Tell me about your presentation of ITAG.
So I was going to do one on a GEO app, but we decided to change that and do the know your role in GIS, because we've noticed that a lot of people are coming into the field fresh, out of high school, no GIS experience. And since I've been in GIS now, since beginning of twenty twenty, I'm one of the newer faces, but also I have a little more tenure and more experience with some of the people they're bringing on. And they kind of wanted my perspective with working in three different departments and what I all did to, to get where I'm at and understand my data and what kind of classes I had to take and it's been neat. A lot of questions that a lot of people.
These new layers for the engineers, that you said there are developing, are permits for?
Like their underground wires, the, what are they? Utility permits, so it comes in different colors for different styles. And then in the attributes, I've created who owns it, what the permit number is, he's been assigning permit numbers. And then when it was installed and if it's overhead or underground. So I've been, I've been drawing those in for him, so he has those on his layers.
Actual time.
Yeah, and reading those, I mean, I don't know what those are. I think I called him several times.
By the time you get them, you'll know.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be sleeping thinking about all these permits.
Any other questions for her? Okay, is there a motion to accept your quarterly report?
Second.
It's been moved in second, any further discussion? If not, all with a favor, signify with say an aye.
Aye.
Contrary, motion to adjourn.
Thank you, guys, thank you, Dan.
Thanks. What, are you just writing, checking or? Put out a petition, some legalizing, there's a Michael Morse, an attorney.
That's the email I sent you all that John's spoken into.
Oh.
You were requesting the either payment or suspension of property taxes, and since the property is currently held with a tax certificate, we're, I contacted the county attorney to do some checking on that before you guys make a decision. So it wasn't on the agenda because I have not heard back from John.
I just, you're the area supervisor, some of the board supervisors, that else probably, like you said, that you're processing, you're just they're humanized. So you're just petitioning for that piece of property then? I own property, yeah. Oh, you own property? Yeah.
Yes, he's asked.
After I got out of service of military, I moved back down to two hundred and fifty. Got a lot of.
So, yeah, but I didn't feel the board should make a decision until we found out, because there's a tax certificate on it. So if he would suspend the taxes on the property, how does the investor, what happens?
Okay, so we don't have all our data back yet?
We don't, we don't, we have the information here, we have the request, we're waiting from the county attorney, because we need to find out what to do with the tax certificate that's already on it.
You follow that then off? No, I'm not. Okay, so we're. I'm over there, I'm. Yeah, we're waiting for information back from the county attorney. So we won't do any action right now yet until we find out all the information from him. When we do get that information, we will put it back on the agenda. And if you want, we can notify you when that happens, so you can be here then. Right, it's my understanding that this has to be given or by August second, or I lose my property, I become homeless. Did you get that advice from another attorney? From Iowa legal aid, from the left. Okay. And that's who's supposed to be here, I understand.
Who are the attorney from council votes?
Yes. He's running my court, he's running back to the chair.
Yeah, and I told him that we were waiting to hear from the county attorney, that I would let him know when he made a decision.
I got letters, maybe on Saturday morning, told me to attend, but you can, I understand by the letter, you're supposed to be here too. Well, we won't be making any decisions, so why don't, you have a phone that we can reach you by, or would we do that or send in a letter?
Um, we can certainly give them a call if we get it one day, when they get it out.
Give her your phone number then.
You want to just write it down, that way, that way everybody doesn't hear your number.
Yeah, we're.
The second is a week from today.
I know. What's that?
The second is a week from today.
Okay. Yeah, boy, it's a, I'm having a real hardship, I'm ready to social security and disability, I applied for all that, but it's pending to you. Does that letter say the second?
It does, it does, but I don't know if that's a hundred percent, I'm hearing, we have to try to be a sure on that.
Well, nothing will happen until we, we act on it here, is that right, Court?
Right.
Yeah, and we will get ahold of you, we'll get ahold of you then. Okay, thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck, yeah. Good luck. Thanks, Steve. Yeah, just sort of home. Right.
Thanks, John.
Okay, next we'll go to payables. Any questions on payables?
Well, I didn't have a question for that.
And you, obviously the report doesn't have the jail to base, which I already had a brand, but I did send you all, maybe you want as well?
That was a horrible. Two thousand.
Four hundred and twenty.
Oh, this, yeah, four, four, twenty-two thousand eight sixty-five fifty-one would be on, would be on that. And that makes according to the pay, this year at ninety-four point five five percent completed, however.
Gee. Any other, just any questions on the payables? Any questions? Motion to approve the payables. It's been moved?
Second.
It's seconded, any further discussion? Not all with a favor, signify with say an aye.
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 Contrary, motion to adjourn. Okay, next we have, you guys ready for Delta Service, all right?
Well, yeah, yes and no, I've got one, but after our Board of Health meeting on Thursday.
It did good, huh?
Well, it changed.
Okay.
And this will be kind of my report, I guess, for my committee report, but the every five years, they have a community, community health needs assessment that has to be done by hospitals and clinics and, and the Board of Health. And, and so that assessment has to be done every five years, and so it's due right now. And so it was decided at the Board of Health meeting to include that into the RFP. And when we do that, we're basically going to go ahead and change the RFP. And, and the people that will actually be doing the RFP aren't the ones that we had listed that we were going to request in our, you know, proposal from. So it's basically being redone, so we could get it prepared. It'll be considerably less, simply because hospital, St. Anthony's Regional Hospital, Manny Regional Hospital, they all hire somebody to do it for them. So we do have a pretty good idea of what that expense should be, and there's people that do it, so we're just taking, it's, after Thursday, just taking it in a different direction. So.
He outsourced to someone that does those things.
Yeah, yeah, and, and this, this, you know, we, after the meeting, we felt that, you know, a community needs, health needs assessment basically is probably kind of what we need anyway, you know, so.
Yeah, included anyway.
Yeah, it's going to be included. Yeah, it's going to be included in it anyway. So, um, we'll see if we can have it on.
Okay, so we will, last question, we will put it off until you let us know to put it on again.
Yeah.
Okay, review request from Western Island Networks. I think you all got a copy of that there and. They are now saying that some places are giving some local match money. It's up to us, they really weren't pushing it too hard. But, uh, we can do whatever we want. You can see what they had done out of, and this is brought up because they've seen it happen. Ottawa, Ottawa County. And I said, Courtney, I had talked about this and I said, it's up to the rest of yous. I do feel if we do this for this one, then we need to do a payables. I don't think we need to. And they, they have not been listed yet, first they haven't seen it, needed it. It's entirely up to you guys what you want to do. And like, um, like Courtney said. We start this probably over floodgates. And a little less than that, right, with, um, two more jobs. And I can see where they came from.
Well, I, I called Scott Belt, Potawatomi County Supervisor. I got to know him quite a bit during the watershed and. Authority meetings that we would attend and. So I asked him about it and he said, well. You know, this is, this is what, um. You know, the, the rescue plan is about, you know, it's about getting broadband to, so you can use those dollars. You know, as you know, as was in the email.
That's part of, part of what the power.
Yeah. And, um, and he's, it's, he's actually using the same company that's requesting this right now. So it's the same. Only they're doing it down in the trainer area. So, um. He made, he made another comment. Well, I want to address that right now, but I'll have another comment that he made about. The way Potawatomi County is using those funds. But, uh, and I would agree with you, I, I think it, I, he said, he said, what it's going to do is, is it's going to put them. At a, at a level higher to give the grant if you have, if you have local support, just like any other grant, you know, if you have that kind of support. They'll score better on the, on the, uh. And I, I, and I would agree, Gene, that, uh, the other one. If we approve this, I think they should be considered as well. Yeah.
And I guess I feel like I'd be. I don't know that you're going to have a lot of, Dean probably answers better than I can. I don't expect that we'll see a lot of these bigger companies come in and request these funds. Because they're not going to willing to stick up and spend the money for these miles. There's rural bigger, bigger return for them. Am I right, Dean?
Yeah, they're, they're, you know, you have Century Link right now, you know, they're not even. They're not even dropping lines to the, um, uh, local development areas, you know? And so they don't even care. They're not, they're not into the rural, they're, they would rather, if you've got a. Twelve-story apartment building, they would rather be in there, you know, where there's. A smaller footprint, but more customers. And so they're not going to, they're not going to go to the last mile, they're not considering that at all. So I don't, I don't know that we'd ever see any. From, I don't think we'll see anything coming from either anymore to tell them, to tell those.
And I, I do think if we do decide to do this, that it would be contingent under approval of the.
That's right, and that's what, that's what Scott says.
I understand all that, but. Comes to butt part. Not only with the American Rescue Plan funds here for that. Any other governmental funds that come for any other organization or any other city. They're going to be in here too. And I'm just afraid this is setting a precedence that. That, uh. I don't know that it will cost us a lot more, but it very well could and where are you going to cut, where are you going to cut bait at? That's, that's, that's my problem. Because I, I know that some cities are trying to do some things in a different fund. And they asked for letters before and, you know, and if they can feel they have dollars that makes them score higher. Then they're going to want to do the same thing. And I'm not saying this is a bad project, I'm just saying that. Going forward, this could be an issue for us down the stretch. Uh, and, and I consider you're saying. You know, um. It has gotten to be, I think the state has figured this out. Stretch their dollars, their local match like.
Exactly.
These cat grants and things like that, I mean. We're going to see more of that, I'm afraid.
But I.
Well. We got to try to push these out.
That ten thousand dollars wanting to pay.
That's why Rick is here. Because he's a small match.
He needs more of the match money.
He's got fifty thousand dollars plus another five thousand.
Plus an N D A, he's stuck with fifty-five thousand. Well. You know, and this is the part that I was going to hold back on, but since it's been brought up, I'll go ahead and say it. You know, Scott says we are reaching out to all the communities. Who have projects, we want to help them. You know, I mean, he's, he's saying that, you know, in a lot of these communities, we don't get a help very much throughout. You know, as far as the county is concerned. And he said, so we are reaching out to them if they've got some projects that they want to complete and it's going to fall. Under this and they have an opportunity to get these dollars. You know, he said, we're going to help them, so.
So see, which funds are they using to subsidize this?
Recovery. The rescue plan.
While we're looking at spending here.
It's that three point nine million that we probably won't spend. You know, I mean, that's. That's kind of, that's what they're looking at.
Well, I think, you know, I don't know what this H A C is going to cost. That could be.
Well, and you know, we've got, we've got a time, we've got quite a bit of time to do that. You know, so I, to do all of it, to be quite honest with you.
And Potawatomi is a different county. Just, I'm just thinking what they get that the rest of us don't get.
Right.
They've got three casinos that are feeding that community very big. And I will.
They got, they got nineteen million too instead of three point nine.
And at the same time. Carroll County, we always have run out and supported grants for other communities. We had to do match like on cat graphs, we've done that. Uh, I have no problem with that. I think there's, it's a way of leveraging a lot of money, much of our small investment. If we do this, I would say we take this out of our recovery funds because. That's what, it's, some of it's for broadband. Do we put a lot of, no, I don't think so. Let's have a, Courtney, give them up on a points system better.
Well, the other thing too is, I mean, if. If, if, you know, these small communities, if they're not interested, you know. A lot of them just basically are not interested in, you know, reaching out, so. And there are some that will.
There'll be water systems and sewer systems. You know, there's, there's a lot of how much you can do with that too.
Yeah.
Water, water systems are basically should be self-funded.
They should, yeah. I, I, I don't think it, I, I guess, I don't think it'd be anything like that. It may be a paving project that's two blocks long or something like that, you know, where they want. If they can make that work, if they can fit that into the American Rescue Plan. But they're getting money as well, I don't know how, you know, how much, you know.
Well, it's, it's pretty good money.
Yeah, so, so I mean, um. I don't know, that was the comment that he made, he, he basically said, well. You know, we are going there, so. And they probably look at it differently than what we would.
Broadband is becoming a. Very large. Needed utility. I think we are. Probably going to see some announcements from companies in the region. That may not go back to work. So broadband is a very big deal to them to get that employee at home too. And Lord knows that we can see it in every store you go to that we need as many jeans and joes as we can get. And. Like I said, I, I, I'm leery of opening the door because I don't know what kind of floodgate will come through. But. I also know that. From the state government to the federal government, they've been pushing hard for broadband.
And, you know, I, from the maps that we've brought in, in the past. I would be surprised that after this is all over, two years from now, we're still going to have underserved people in Carroll County. I just, it's just going to happen.
I just don't think, you know, the people, they always say, I want broadband, I want broadband, well. That check is very large to get it to you. And the rate of return is, well, you can see it, there isn't a telco in this. Smaller environments anywhere in our county that are not for sale for very cheap money. You can buy them for pennies on the dollar. Because that service will not subsidize their expenses and I'm not sure that broadband. If you run it six, seven miles, you're spending a lot of money.
Thirty thousand a mile.
Your rate of return is, takes long time to pay back.
Yeah, I mean, you have to make a pretty good business plan and you're, and you need grand dollars to do it. It's just, you know, I, I don't know that any, any, um. Any build out that Western Island Networks done in the last ten years hasn't had our U S money or, or some type of. I mean, the stimulus plan back in two thousand eight, two thousand nine. To get the, to get the economy going again. You know, they qualified for that, there was the shovel ready situation. So, so that's how, that's how that happens and. You have to have grand dollars to do it and, uh, so I.
So let me ask you this question, you think the ten thousand is negotiable? Or that dollar amount could be different?
He says that, that's what, that's what. The Potawatomi County is getting six times the amount we are. So if you buy ten thousand by, yeah, six. So you had, what'd you say, eighteen or nineteen million? We'll get three.
You mean as far as the recovery dollars? Yeah. I, it'd be nice to know from Western Island Networks. If they had kind of a plan and how many dollars they were actually going after. You know, I think that's probably the biggest question, you know, is, is, uh. Are they going to need more from Carroll County? Than they are from Potawatomi County, valor wise, you know? That might have a, and I.
Your business plan has got a lot more chance for success in Potawatomi than it does here. Here's more, more rural residents that they're going to buy. So they're.
Well, trainer, it's, it's the trainer area, I think.
And I think they're, they're after here is just so they can score better.
Right. Yeah.
I mean, it, it, it says it's negotiable.
I thought originally they didn't even know where they were going to put the money in.
That's exactly right. And I, that's.
Are they going to be in Carroll County or?
No, they're all going to be in Carroll County, yeah.
I mean, we gave them a letter.
I saw it, yeah, Crawford too.
Well, that's Crawford County's thing then.
We did give them the letters before.
I agree, maybe we should know their plan more detailed.
I don't think there's that much time here to do this, I mean, they got a pilot trip by the end of the week, no, they're a month.
My understanding, I guess, but I don't remember the date, I just know that at least time sensitive.
Yeah, it's, I think it's here, here shortly, they have to file it. And, and I. I could go either way on it, as far as the amount or whatever. I can see what they're wanting to get some local support to get a better rank.
They can score better.
Yeah. But I, I do think if they do it for one, we better do it for the other one.
And the deadline is probably the same.
It is, I'm sure it is. And I think it's, I think it's in this week. First week.
First of August.
Are you going to cut, commit the money to the other company?
Without even asking? Yeah, without asking.
We just, last week, we did a lot of support. What kind of do with Windstream? Are you going to do with, uh?
Well, I don't think they're going to seek these dollars, seek these grants.
They haven't been entered for lottery support and neither has Templeton. That's how we did a lot of support.
Lottery support, but they didn't ask for a month or a year.
Oh, didn't ask for a month. But Windstream hasn't been in that for lottery support.
Well, I don't, I don't think they're going to, I don't think Windstream's going to, I mean, that's.
I doubt it.
Yeah, I don't know if they're seeking any grants.
They're laying their money on the point right now. But my, my point is I think if we do it for one, we better do it for the other. If we did like send a letter of support for lottery on this round.
I'm going to agree with everybody saying that broadband is a huge concern for the county going forward. Trying to get services to our residents. I will disagree with giving a pledge to the other company that did not even request it. And going forward, if somebody were to come in and ask for money, you know, at some point we do have to say no. Sorry.
Say that again? Well, yeah.
And at some point, if somebody, if somebody else comes in and asks for money, you know, we're just, we got to do a better job of saying no, sorry.
Well, or we, we're just, we'll do it, we'll do a good job of analyzing each one of them and if it doesn't qualify, you know, our.
I think that's the case we do over time, it's on an individual basis.
It's on the individual basis, yeah.
Courtney, do you see, receive any, uh, rescue plan money that. You have tried, you've tried to apply for.
Yeah, I've applied and it's in the pending status.
That is, I'm sure.
I'm sure when we get the money out here from the treasurer.
Where am I supposed to?
So we got it set up where, where we're going to put it. Just looking forward.
To be quite, to be quite honest with you, interest on that dollar, on those dollars could easily pay for a lot of this.
Even a one percent.
Yes.
But this ten thousand is not put forward until they receive.
Right.
And when will, you, you have, Dean, do you ever hear when that be six months now? I, I, I don't know when they'll make a decision, I'm sure it won't be tomorrow.
I think it'll be pretty quick, but I don't.
She did tell me, I think it is, I think it is like, yeah. This is the next, before the fall.
Yeah, before fall, I think they want to get it going.
I think it would have been nice if they would have asked us for, or had a specific ask instead of giving us an example of another county. If they would have said, we're asking fifteen hundred, we're asking two thousand. I mean, right now, it's like.
Well, it sounds to me like this came after the fact down there too.
Yeah.
I think that.
I guess, to be quite honest with you, I bet it came from the board supervisors. Said, if we, if we support you financially, will you score better? That would be my guess, but according to when I, when I was talking to Scott, it sure sounded that way. We just, he said, he said they, they're going to score better if you financially support the brand. You know, it is and it, it is and it isn't on our dollars. We have the discretion to use those dollars any way we want to. But it definitely falls into the. A category that.
Scope.
Yeah, of what, what, you know, what they want these dollars to be used for. You know, not only for, um. Clean air, for our. Workforce here in this, but, but also for broadband.
How would we make a motion? It's not to exceed three thousand dollars, not to exceed, and I don't even know how we would do it. I think that was specific.
Commit to a certain dollar.
Yeah.
Commit to a certain dollar that, that it's only, uh, we commit them dollars upon a successful grant application.
And I'm, I'm sure the project down there is a lot bigger than.
Tell you what I'll do, I'll make a motion that we pledge $5,000 to the Western Island for this application. From our recovery.
From, from.
The recovery funds.
I'll second that motion, you know, we're a much smaller county, so. We don't have, we don't have.
Yeah, if approved or if received.
Yeah, if received.
Yes.
Intention, so I mean, we're the word.
What's that?
What, do I need to do the other county, or other county?
I don't know how you would word that word, be safe though.
I would word it both.
I don't know, like I said, didn't hear from them at all, just other than their letter of request, I mean.
Well, this, that is support.
Yeah.
Well, we did a lot of support.
Yeah.
And this just came, I, what, Thursday or Thursday?
Well, you know, and I, I, I actually believe we can, because I think that's, you know, we want them to score good as well on the grant. And, you know, the thing about it is, I don't, I don't know if they're gonna have a, of course, now networks is gonna have a five million dollar project and, and Templeton's gonna have a two million dollar project, you know? That's the only thing that, but 5,000 dollars isn't, isn't a big deal. I, I'm gonna, I'll withdraw, man, I, I think we need to support.
I'll amend my motion in to include Templeton telephone for the same amount.
I second that.
Okay, then move in second that we will support the contributed 5,000 dollar support to their grant application for both Western Island Networks and Templeton Telephone. Any further discussion upon completion of successful application? I need to move from American Recovery Dollars.
And we need a letter of request from Templeton.
Yes.
Yeah.
If they don't want it, that's fine.
Yeah.
That's, that's just okay.
I'm just concerned about timing.
Right.
Okay, any further discussion? If not all of the favor signified, I say an aye.
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried.
Can you say right or no? I, I'm still struggling with that, I'll say aye because the board has a general consensus, but.
I think I heard your voice.
I just, I'm struggling with it, but it's, it's fine.
But it's kind of pass through money, actually.
It is, and it's American Recovery Dollars, and what I mean, it is a big problem, so.
Like I said, it is our money and it isn't our money.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're correct. It's 10,000 dollars though that we can make sure that Courtney is warm and she's breathing great air. And we can guarantee that, that it's 10 more thousand dollars towards that. I have no idea what this is gonna cost. I would be shocked if we can do it for two and a half million. I'll be shocked, it'd be more than that.
I think you're right, it's the majority of your money for that.
I think we're gonna be in that ballpark.
So Gene, I can email Kevin Mack and tell him what you guys decided, do you have a contact to telephone or?
If you'd like to, I, I just, we just need that Friday.
But I think Santa Claus has.
Hey, by the way. Okay, so let's take a care. I E D A audit form. This is due to the Region 12 panel, right, that says that we have to have an audit done. So we need to make a motion to approve this request, this form, and authorize the chair to sign. The motion is that effect?
This is what now?
It's a form that says that acknowledging that they are requesting that we have to have an audit done.
Oh, for the.
It's for the C B D G.
C B D G, I see that, yeah, I read that, yeah.
So much.
I'll second that.
Okay, move in second, any further discussion? If not, all of the favors, signify by the same aye.
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Next we have is approval of C B D G housing draw number four, and that is for 26,000 something, or 16,000.
$1,500?
Yeah. Your motion to approve for that draw number four.
Pass through money, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll make that motion second.
Then move in second, any further discussion? If not, all of the favors, signify by the same aye.
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 Contrary, motion carried.
I need signatures on the draw and then on the audit, the audit name needs to be blue.
And blue it.
Might as well just sign it on the blue, for a basis.
Any letter opener that morning?
I'm gonna go back and throw that on the way. It's been through the center this week, because we had that from the last one. Okay, next we have is a substance abuse, uh, report. This is our, talks about their goals, how they handle them and where they're at in their goals.
I'm gonna have to approve the, just so you're thorough, substance abuse report.
Okay, the motion made, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Then move in second, any further discussion? If not, all of the favors, signify by the same aye.
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried.
Can I include in that motion to authorize you to sign it?
Oh, yes.
Do sign it electronic.
That appear to you too?
Yeah.
For God's sake, let's agree with that, if that changes, it's painful.
Yes, it is.
And that goes back to when last time, last term, and then everything changed. So we've made Joanne, this authorized, which.
We'll have to change that at some point.
That is totally painful. Okay, next we'll do manure management. Uh, we have Mike Civil, section 25, Washington Township, annual update, change crop rotation or often deals, using manure analysis. Melon, section two of Cameron Township, Otterton County, annual update, this change in crop rotation or often deals. Gullay Nursery, section 20, Union Township, annual update, updated Russell's two and P indexes. Bladen Fork, section 17, Union Township, another annual update, change crop rotation or often deals. Felton Finishers, annual update, change crop rotation for often deals, and use manure analysis. Steve Neese, section 15, Washington Township, annual update, removing Swine Nursery for, uh, full owner, head out. And Justin Schrader, section 33 of Wheatland Township, annual update, updated soil samples, P index and Russell's two. Jason and Nathan Nealon, section 32 of Neese Township, annual update, no changes. Joe is shown, uh, section 29, Glen Township, uh, annual update, updated soil samples. Stone Path three, section 23 of Pleasant Valley Township, annual update, updated soil samples. Laverne Graving Site, section 34 of Pleasant Valley Township, annual updated, updated soil samples, P index and Russell's two. Meyer three, section 14 of Sheridan Township, annual update, updated soil samples, P index and Russell's two. Tewers Finisher, section five, R T A Township, annual update, no changes. Carson Site, section 27, Ewell Township, annual update, change of crop rotation or often deals, use manure analysis. Nissley and Nissley, section 32 of R T A Township, annual update, change crop rotation or often deals, and use manure analysis. Okay, then we will have committee reports.
Also, I'm short in suite, tomorrow I have R S V P and Foster Grandparents at four o'clock, our first meeting in person.
Okay, what do you have this week?
That's this week.
Don't you also have a radio?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. I'll go ahead and go next. On the 20th, I had attended the C A B C at noon. In that presentation, there was a couple of young people from the county that have started a, an event app. Uh, it's an app that each community can control and place on this app of events, whether it be a walk, a run, uh, you can do for drive sales. Every city has an administrator, or they can have another city do the administration for them. It's called Neighbor. It's a free app. The, the, what I like about it is you can change the radius of where you're at. I can set it for 70 miles and, you know, find events going on for the day if I'm looking for something to do. Which I kind of like it, it's a regional coordination, I like that a little bit better than some things that I have seen. I'm hoping we can guys get it up and get it going good, it's just getting started. Uh, that was a presentation to the, to the C A B C that day. The redo, we had a retail coach update and the Bree visits. I have a little legislative update, there was nothing earth shattering there. Uh, June unemployment numbers, unemployment's down a little bit in county, just about everybody's working, that's going to go to work appears. Uh, then on the 20th also that night, I attended the Farm Bureau supper. Craig Hill spoke there, very interesting subject matters. Um, on the 21st, I had mental health in Polstein. Not too much exciting earth shattering there, some preparations that started for the state funding to kick in. And of course, we all know that will be for about a year away. There will be an U R H update provided, uh, in the very near future. Uh, Cherokee School had a refile for saying some COVID money that we had out. There was a delay in them requesting it, uh, we did not approve it, you know, we stopped short. They missed a couple deadlines, it just didn't, you know, work out very well. Uh, Courtney, I think the payment schedule that we were on prior were half, comes in August, and a quarter in November, and a quarter in April, like we did last year. That was approved and we'll stay on that same, so whatever you had, you'll know. Uh, the new counties were voting, this is the first meeting in voting, uh, that all went pretty well. Upcoming week. Uh, looks like I have maybe C A B C on Tuesday next week. Western Now, a development, workforce development board meeting on Wednesday. Uh, probably will zoom that, and that is it for me next week.
I do, see this week.
I have one next Tuesday, but that may be pre-prolongated from, and it may not really be one. That may not be, because there, that one's following me with the D O T, so I'm guessing that's probably not true. When I put it in there, it's just a reoccurring thing, so. I, I had a couple of, I had a letter of request for, from the city of Coon Rapids, because they are, we get it upside, to tell you exactly what they were requesting. It's a letter of support, and it's the Iowa Economic Development Authority, and it's for the downtown revitalization program. They wanted a, a letter from the board for similar to what we've been doing. I decided not to put it on the agenda. I'm going to do it personally, if anybody else would like to personally, I'll get you a copy of the letter in a format, you can change it however you wish, and then just sign it and get it off to them. I wasn't sure that the board would want to do that for each particular community, I just was a little unsure, and I got it late in the week and I.
I think we've done that.
Did it already.
We have done it for that.
Yeah, and if we do it individually, that's fine too.
Uh, it's whichever way the board would like to go, I, I, I'm comfortable going individual, but if you would like to do it as a board, we certainly could. Uh, if you'd like to put that on for next Monday.
I think Mason driving, man?
Yes.
I think that probably has, not that, by more of, oh, than individually.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, if you get the count.
How do you say that?
Well, it would score higher on their grant, yeah.
I mean, I think going over to the board, I mean, that makes it more.
I'd cry.
Okay, then I also, correctly, I also received a call from a, a person representing, kind of representing the Iowa Soybean Association. And they'd heard that we were considering doing something in our driveway. And what they're wanting to do, they have approached, I think they're, have approached a lot of counties about treating bridges, treating different things with some type of product that they have. And he would like to know if they can come make a presentation that when we get our driveway done, we really want to treat it, to watch it and see if there's any benefit for our town to use it in other places. Uh, it's a product, you know, for the soy.
Sealing.
It's like a sealant, yeah. I don't know what the cost is, uh, he wanted to know, maybe, maybe come and make a presentation.
Is that soybean based?
Yes, from Soybean Association, the person is promoting that. So I thought I'd bring it up to the board and go whichever direction you'd like. Uh, I wouldn't mind listening to the guy, I'm not gonna make a commitment, but I wouldn't mind listening to him. So if you have the want, I will call and, I will tell him, he has a limited amount of time.
I hear the word try and I think free, we're gonna try it out for you.
Well, I didn't, I didn't hear free, but I, but I, I think that's a good association to have, but I wouldn't mind though. I, I guess, I don't know if there, I was gonna ask Zach if he's been approached by anybody, or anything in D O T about it.
Much as Zach and I have a ton of clue on for one this week.
Well, it might, might be, you know, that it wouldn't apply for what we're doing, because I don't know, we're not, we're not gonna do a complete overlay of asphalt or anything like that, we're gonna be doing.
Correct.
What we talked about, the last meeting, patching, yeah.
And then, but sealing, and I don't know if that would give us a good.
Cover.
Or a good place to study.
Yeah.
Really a good study or not, uh, but I'm like, I would be willing to listen to it.
Yeah.
And maybe they would be, I don't know. But I will take care of that on, on.
Products, products for you with the application.
Yeah, try this.
There you go, that's probably about right. That's it for me.
You might be surprised.
I can go. Um, last week I had the daycare, everything's going well there, they did put a canopy over the sun shaded areas, um, for the little, for the little children there, having a staff issue, just like everyone else, trying to find help. Um, that was it, the only official meeting I had last week. I did send you guys an email for the legislative forum, we, we are meeting in August. But if you guys have anything that you would like them to really push forward for Lucas and, you know, sort of the, that group. I sent it to you guys, if you wanna fill it out, I'll let you know. And then I do know after our executive meeting, the mental health board will be there as well. I assume Rich, I don't know if you've heard about that yet. They'll be on the twelfth in August in the afternoon, they're gonna have a discussion. They'll be on the twelfth in August in the afternoon. They're gonna have a discussion on how it's gonna transition over.
Yes.
So you and I are probably both being in line that day.
I'm guessing we probably do well, because I'm probably gonna go, wanna go and hear how that transition's supposed to work, because we've got some sideline questions that, um, as far as funding and write dates and.
Well, this is after you're listed, and then they're gonna.
Discussion on how to, or how it's gonna start rolling over from the county back to the states. Um, that's it. And I'm just like, I do not have any scheduled meetings.
I can go and ask, um, on Tuesday night, had the Farm Bureau annual meeting, I attended that. Rich pretty much covered that. Then on Thursday, noon, we had a very long meeting. It was a three-hour meeting with the Board of Health. New opportunities gave an update on the way their programs are going, the WIF program, the maternal, child, and adolescent health. The numbers are creeping up, but it's, they're not really kind of where they would really like to see them. It's because of the COVID, but they're working on it. They're working hard to make, to make sure that they're contacting all these people that need, need their services. As far as the public health nursing, that took the most time. Their numbers are likewise, are, were really low for the the twenty-one, the twenty-one year fiscal year, simply because they just could not get out and do what they do. The, they did report on the financially, the grants, the grants are coming, all, all started July first. And they actually look pretty good compared to years past where they were, they've been reducing the grant dollars. Grant dollars have stabilized. And this is a, something I asked Courtney about is the, they're receiving $170,000 through the recovery plan, and we need to know where that money is going. We talked a little bit about that briefly, Courtney. And right now, right now, the money goes, the grant dollars go through the county and then go to public health. So I'm sure that's how this is gonna be. They're not exactly sure how that's gonna flow, but I'm assuming it's gonna flow the same way. So we will have those dollars, they'll have to request from us how they're gonna use them. So that's $170,000. Now, we had a discussion on, on the humanization administration, COVID-19 administrative fees, of which they have down, there's about $65,000. That is sitting, not in the, in the county, any, it is sitting somewhere in, I'm assuming St. Anthony Regional Hospital.
So is that gonna be distributed elsewhere?
Well, that's the conversation. I mean, it was just like when the, when this whole process was going, when, say they had the mass clinic, the eleven seventy, they used, and I, I get it, they used St. Anthony's billing system to run those dollars through, as opposed to creating a new one, and then. But they're going to, they plan to address that, but in the meantime, I think it's gonna remain the same for now until we find out where the, where the actual public health nurse ball drops and where it's gonna be, you know, when that, when we finalize that. There was discussion on the expectations of the Board of Health on the public health role, and the discussion pretty much kind of went like the public health nurse, Sarah Schulte, was there, as well as Nicole Schering, who is the director of Public Health Carol, St. Anthony Hospice and, and, and nursing. Also, the, the new chief of the nursing department was there as well. Our, I think the Board of Health's contention was not necessarily with those people in the room. It was mostly with the administration and how they were representing Carroll County Public Health, and not necessarily a county public health service. But as a, an extended arm of St. Anthony Regional Hospital. And so we made it clear to them, it took a little while to get across that, you know, we were not Carroll County Board of Health, was not upset with them. But they were concerned about how the way Carroll County Public Health is being represented in the county. And so I think they felt, they felt comforted by that, although probably not fully 100% appeased. The local health, local public health service contract with I D P H was, was signed. I don't know. I always thought for years, and I think everybody on the Board of Health thought for years, that the, the public health service contract was a contract between the county and and St. Anthony Regional Hospital, but it's not. That has, this contract that we've had for years is is between the provider, St. Anthony Regional Hospital, and the Iowa Department of Public Health. So we, I don't, we've looked, Courtney's looked, I've looked, the Board of Health has looked for a contract between St. Anthony Regional Hospital and Carroll County, and has not come up with one. And so they don't even think there's a contract exists, that it might have been just basically a handshake that was 27 years ago. And so I think we're gonna continue to investigate that, but at this point in time, we don't even think there's a contract that exists. The COVID, the current COVID vaccine rates for Carroll County are 51%. The physician on the Carroll County Board of Health, Dr. Heim, gave a report on the COVID situation as she sees it. And it's, 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 it's moving up. It's escalating. The Delta virus is definitely in Carroll County. It is 1,000 times, I don't wanna say that, one time, it's more transmissible than any other variant that, that we've seen. And so, you know, they're looking at distances. They're, you know, saying that six feet used to be, and now it's probably gonna be 10 or 12 feet. It's highly transmissible in open air outside situations. So it's, it's gonna be a problem. I, you know, Carroll County is one of the most highly, I don't even wanna say, has the highest vaccination rate of, of any, a lot of the county, or many of the counties in the state of Iowa. I think it's their 66 county wide throughout the nation. So we're doing a good job here, but I think the way it sounds, there's gonna be some challenges coming forward. Any comments on any of that? Otherwise, I don't have anything scheduled for this week. But we'll see what the week brings. But we'll try to get that, that R F P.
Let us know what, what happens. I don't know that you have to go back to the drawing board or a little bit. Was that the word?
Yeah, and.
I assume nothing's gonna move very quickly.
No, I don't, I don't think we're going to. I don't think anything's gonna happen for sure in the next six months, but, and it could be. We definitely, there's, there's, there has to be some changes made though. There they are.
Okay, last week, I really didn't have anything scheduled, but had a very busy week on the phone and emails on a lot of different topics, some upsetting ones. I also did receive the letter last week in regard to the City Development Board for the state of Iowa. They had some notice in regard to the public hearing on the voluntary annexation, including consent orders. That's down in Des Moines, so I, this is in regards to have been talked about by the landfill. So it's the same thing that we've seen, look at it for a long time. So it's got a little evidence in the state. Courtney filed that, but then. This week I don't have anything right now, and then that's it. Any comments, notes on wine, Ben?
There are no comments, no.
How many attendees?
Did you catch that, Ben? How many attendees?
Uh, there are four watching right now, including me, so three other people.
Okay, we're in order for motion to adjourn.
Second.
That moved in second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried.